Silent.
Good evening and welcome to our commission meeting for April the thirtieth. Judge Bass, would you please lead us in pledge allegiance?
My pleasure. The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation.
Thank you. Judge Bass, we'll go ahead and let you go first because you probably have a packed agenda.
Thank you and may it please the commission. I appreciate you buying me to be on your agenda. As you know, I've only been a judge for a few months now and there are some issues that I wanted to bring to the county commission's attention and I understand that the commission has already weighed in. Couple of things that I'll talk to you about and I'll try to be brief. Regarding this courthouse, this courthouse was built in nineteen eighty-five, it's a beautiful structure, it's a historic structure. Eighteen eighty, yeah, I missed a hundred years in it. I've actually celebrated the centennial in nineteen ninety-five. It's very attractive, obviously, it's a very old building. And some of the things that create some hazards. And various places of the building, wiring, so I wanted to talk to you about wiring, the front desk of the court office and also the courthouse. Part, but I've given you a packet and this is in the judge's office and you can see on the first page. Wiring that is running across because outlet in the floor. Page two demonstrates the same thing, page three is you can, you can tell it's a trip hazard when, when the judge has went to their office, there's cords running across the floor, some of them are raised. Some is covered by carpet and you can see that on page four, I've tripped on these wires, other people have tripped on these wires. On page six, you can see what has happened a couple of times, there's been contractors come in to install wiring. What you're seeing on page six is a new telephone cord. It's an internet-based telephone cord. And what you're seeing there, that is, you have to turn the picture up on its end to see actually how it is. But the contractor literally stapled the wire to the wall, the wood wall of the courthouse in, in, in the judge's office. And that has happened different places in the courtroom, just literally stapled it to the wall.
Judge, is that this most recent contractor we have or was that done before you started?
I believe that's telephone.
Okay, thank you.
But they're, they're not the only ones, there's other, if you look around in the court's office, there's wires stapled to the mold trimming and/or the walls. And on page seven is just an aerial view where I stood up on a chair where you can actually see the wires and the, and the trip hazards there. So this the, I'm wanting to propose the solution and you on page eight. To resolve in this one office, all these trip hazards and genetic problems. If you see where down on page eight and nine, I circled one that you could, there could be installed in the floor close to the judge's desk. An outbox and that outlet box could have a one game receptacle which could be your two plugs for power. And then the other side, you can have your low voltage for your ethernet, your telephone, you could have jacks, but, but that would be close to the judge's desk, which would be in the floor. And so I investigated, well, you know, then we'd have to what's underneath the meat? What's underneath the judge's office is Ruth Lanier's office. And maintenance, it's her, she's directly below the judge's office. Maintenance allowed, brought in a ladder and I actually this morning crawled up on the ladder and you can see on pages ten above in Ruth's office, there's a drop ceiling. And so there's a cavity between the drop ceiling and the old antique ceiling. And you can see that on page ten. And there again, you have to hold and my question was, what is, what is the barrier between the judge's office and, and the, and downstairs and it's concrete? But found something very interesting. The strength of that floor is arches. The builders of this building built Roman arches to get the strength of that floor. So you start on the one end and you have an arch, it's about five and a half feet from end to end and it arches up and there's where you get your strength, then it does another arch. And then another arch and that's where you get your strength. Obviously, the floor on top is flat, so they apparently poured concrete over the arches. So my suggestion would be as shown on page eight and nine to basically go through the floor in the judges, on the, on the judge's level. It has a newly furnished, like a floating wood floor that a prior judge had installed. Go through the floor, cut out a little of that, it's basically fake wood. And then just chip out enough, which would be about an inch and a half into the concrete. Not getting in brick arches that are below the concrete, we don't want to disturb that because that, there's your strength. But you could chip, you could remove all that concrete and you're still going to have your strength in those arches. Chip that out a little, just enough to be able to install one of the boxes and you could get a low profile electric. Don't have to have a three and a half inch deep electric. Get one about an inch and a half deep. And then drill a hole up through from that cavity, which is above Ruth Lanier's office. And drill a hole up through and therefore you could run your power, you could run your low voltage and, and it could all be there. And picture just to demonstrate, there's already a hole drilled through that floor. And it is shown on page. You see those wires going right there, that's actually in the middle of the floor of my, of the judge's office. And those blue wires go straight down through into that cavity above Ruth Lanier's office, so it's already been done before. I'm just asking that it be done at a different location and then this time, rather than just have wires sticking up and running somewhere to do it right, that's, that's what I'm really asking, that it be done right. To use the junction box as shown on pages eight and nine with a brass flip up cover. So that any judge after me, if they want to use it, they can flip it up, plug into it and remove it or and leave it there, if they don't want to use it, you just cover it, you can have a nice looking brass cover that would not look bad, wouldn't create a trip hazard. So, and I asked Mr. Ooten, your billing permit inspector, to look at this. He has not had a chance to go up and looked up above Miss Lanier's ceiling that I have so far. But he, and I won't put words in his mouth, but he believes this can be done. Now, if you look on page eleven and well, this is in that cavity up above Miss Lanier's drop ceiling. Eleven, twelve and thirteen, you can see that there are power sources all over up, up in that cavity. You have, you have multiple power sources up there. So these power sources could be tapped into to create this outlet that I'm asking for in the judge's office. So it, it, it doesn't have to be a $4,000 job. If the box itself and the hole, the cavity for the hole could be, could be done by maintenance. And install the box and then have an electrician install the power wire and you can have the Supreme Court come in and install their ethernet wires, and you can have a phone company come in and relocate their phone wires, un-staple it from the wall and run it down through into this cavity that I'm talking about. It was right below the judge's office. And then you could run everything up through a junction box. And I think it could be a few hundred dollars versus $4,000, it just doesn't, I don't know who told you $4,000, but that they must not have looked into this like I did, there's power sources to tap in, this is going to be, it's not going to be a high current usage, you're going to basically, basically be running a computer. And, and that's really about it, as far as the power. If you need to run a vacuum in there or something, there's outlets around the wall, but you, then you, you could eliminate all of the wires stapled to the walls, you can eliminate wires running across the floor, you could do all of that, so that is the first thing, I'm at, and on page thirteen, if you would look at that, that is the and again, hold it up wise, those are the two wires that you saw that were coming up through the floor. So that demonstrates this has been done, it just needs to be done right with the junction box. And so that's, that's the first thing I'm asking, asking for. I, I don't think this needs to be a major project and Supreme Court can come. They're not going to charge to rerun their wires and the phone company surely should not charge to rerun their, run their wires, it should have been run correctly in the first place. And not stapled to the actual walls of courthouse. So again, this is a beautiful building, I think we need to treat it as such and so now the next thing, unless you have on that before.
This one, on, on your picture seven, I see the one receptacle coming up, where is it that you want to put the other one?
Okay, good question. Page seven. If you see the, the roll of wire right there, the side of my desk area there.
Okay.
And according to measurements, that would not be on the top of an arch, a brick arch down underneath, it would be off to the side, which means you would have some concrete to play with as far as chipping away to install a floor box. Without having to get into the strength of the arches. And, and I would let Mr. Ooten confirm that, but I think if you do X measurements and if it is right on the peak of it, then we could adjust it one way or the other, so you're in concrete, not in the arch, arch system. So and these, these blocks, these brass, you know, if we could do it, you know, you could do the, on page eight, could do a bigger box. But these, if these are both like the, the, the page eight is like $80 for that brass cover and a box, it's real expensive to do that. And I don't think an electrician running a, a wire through, if you could, we could have maintenance actually install the box and, and the whole electrician, that should be a one-hour job to, to get up in there and find the, the right circuit, that it's not going to be overloaded with another computer. And run it up through there and then wire in a receptacle. And then we, and then we'd have the Supreme Court wire in the jack for the low voltage computer for the Supreme Court wire and the telephone company to do the same, it should, should be very small expense.
Are you going to have the Supreme Court run the wires in the courtroom at the same time that they would do this proposal?
Well, that would be, I think that's going to be a much larger job, I think that's going to have to be a collaborative effort with Supreme Court electricians. Because it looks, I, I'm not sure, I mean, it's hideous up there, you've seen it. I mean, there's wires duct taped to the wall. There's trip hazards for witnesses, for jurors, where wires are just running around. Where, I think your inspector actually went out there a couple of months ago and looked at it and pointed out that there, you know, there's some real obvious hazards for the public to be running around up there with those wires the way they are.
Have they installed your new tech yet that you mentioned to me? Didn't you have some new technology coming, I see Cypher saying no. So you don't have your new technology?
Oh, no, the sound system, no, they haven't, I think on, as far as the courtroom is concerned, that's going to need, we, we need to set up a, a meeting with everyone, Supreme Court, the phone company, the tech people for the sound system, all of that, I would think a, a group meeting and everyone get their heads together, how can you start running wires without, I see it right there in the corner of your building, and you know, that shouldn't have been like that.
Right.
And, you know, if it's just done right in the first place, and I think it's going to take some oversight to make sure these companies do it right, but I would, I would suggest, you know, let's set a date. And where the county commission can be there, Mr. Ooten can be. The Supreme Court can be there. And the IT from the Supreme Court and, and carpet, I think doing the carpet would be the, the best time to to, you know, set a date to, when they take the carpet up, that's when you should do all this construction. And then before the carpet's laid, then make sure all the wires and everything, the sound system and everything else is taken care of. So the other thing that I'm asking for the front office of the, of the, of the court, the secretary's office probably has not been updated since the nineteen fifties or the nineteen sixties. The desk that's in there, it's, I know it's not required of this entity, but it's not OSHA compliant. It's, it's very difficult for the secretary, you can see on page thirteen, I think it is. The very last page. That's just a level shot, they have to put the keyboard on top and they're sitting like this. And it's not ergonomically correct at all. That is just a stick-built structure, it's actually not even a desk, it's just made of two by fours. And so we would like number one to remove that desk. And that could be done by maintenance, it wouldn't take, the only, and, and I think maintenance could relay where, there's no flooring underneath of that desk, it just goes right to concrete or something. Take up that desk, remove it, you could have all the phone company and the Supreme Court take the wire, we would need to have an outlet put in a sidewall, but we'd like to put a new desk. And, and the Supreme Court and the phone company could run their wires the same way that the, the outlet is ran, so that they could just put jacks into walls and so everything could just be plugged in nicely on the wall and you don't have wires running, running across the and, and everything. And so basically removing the desk and then repairing, I think maintenance could do all of that and I don't know if there's old leftover flooring when this floating wood floor was put in, or on fake woods. But that, that may be a few board feet of flooring that I think would be readily available and I think maintenance could do that. And so really, other than the maintenance doing that work and, and having an outlet put in the sidewall. I know before, I think Ms. Lanier had presented on my request, a desk, a credenza and a stand-up desk table and all in addition, but just forget the, the credenza and the the stand-up table, what I'm asking for is just a desk. And I would ask it, again, if we want to do it, I would ask it to be done right. Something that would look good for the next fifty years. This, what's in there has been there for probably fifty or more years. Maybe since the seventies and that's still fifty years now, believe it or not. Well, yeah. So anyhow, if you could consider and, and the desk that we had presented, it, it, with shipping and everything, it'd be about $2,700. And that does have, again, for ergonomics, people sit there, you know, multiple hours at a time, it does have, and I've seen they're coming, I've seen them in the courthouse already, it does have a, a raise option where you can stand and work, so you just don't have to sit all the time. And that desk that I had talked to you about, about $2,700, it has the raise option. I know, again, I've seen a couple already in the, in the courthouse that have that option and, and it's very nice, I bought my own, for my, my office, my stand-up desk, I, I just paid for it out of my own pocket, I did not come to the commission requesting money for that. But that is good. And so I'm asking for approval of, of that for, for that front office and, and I think we can, we can set that up and I think it'd be something that the commission would be proud of, I think it'd be something that the public would be proud of. To make, to make it, just bring it up to date a little bit. And so we're doing that and then as far as the carpet in the courthouse, I think a couple of commissioners have already told me that that is in the plans to replace the carpet in the courthouse. That was actually stated to me before I even requested it and, and because I, I just come into the office and I'm going to tell you, I agree with you, that carpet is, is way, way past due, I mean, but I would request it to commission, it's, it's all one suite, the court, the courtroom, the ante room where the court goes in and out, and we have jury trials to speak to parties outside the presence of the jury. My court porter's in there or my law clerk's in there right now, but you know, we're going to be changing that, my court porter's going upstairs. But the ante room and the court porter's current location really should all be done, it's, it's all the same carpet. It ought to be done at once and it's actually in, in the ante room, there's a place where it's really thread-bearing, I mean, the threads are starting to warp through the, through the carpet and that's probably been in there thirty years, that carpet, so I know that we've definitely got our, our money out of that carpet. I have reviewed some, some commercial-grade carpets. And I will soon be presenting those options, I know it's your decision to the commission. But something that will last another thirty years, that will really, look really nice or match the paint, I'm not requesting that the courtroom be although there's some water damage before the roof was fixed, it should be touched up, but I'm not, you know, I think it's a nice color and, and it could be worked with, so I'm not requesting that, it's just something that needs done after thirty-plus years of of wear and tear on that carpet, you can see it's bleached out, it's supposed to be a moth collar and some of it even looks yellow now. So.
You might have noticed ours too, I mean, it's courthouse-wide.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. And I think this is in the plans as well, right?
Yeah, it is.
So if, if, if the commission would please consider not just the courtroom, but just do it all and again, do it right. It, it's all one suite, the ante room and the court reporter room. And so so just to recap, I'm asking for this wiring to be done, to be done right in, in my office, the judge's office, and that, that would be not just for me, for any future judge. And that we'd be afforded a, a desk in the in the front office, the face of, of, of the judge's office, that that be authorized. And, and then for the carpet to, to consider doing the ante room and the court reporter room as well and allow me to present some options as far as the carpet, the color and the grade of the carpet, now I, I understand that's the commission's decision. So that's my presentation. So any other questions or and, and how will, how will the commission act upon these requests? What, what will be the?
We'll talk and we'll send you a letter to let you know our results.
Okay. All right.
Appreciate you coming in.
From my perspective, I'd like to, I want to get Dan Ooten up there to take a look and see if it's as easy as you, if it is as easy as you think, it's, it's not a big deal to me, if it's the $4,000 quote we got from an electrician, then, you know, we're going to have to think a little harder on it. With regard to the desk, I think we might be able to work something out, you know, we've allocated $4,000 a year for the judge's budget, we might be able to take some out of your budget for the next couple of years to go toward the purchase of that desk, because otherwise we would have to buy everybody in the courthouse the desk, you know, and I understand that it's, you know, stately office and that sort of thing, but we, I mean, we have a hundred fifty staff here that we're trying to, you know, and their desks are uncomfortable, my desk is uncomfortable, I can't even reach it for right now. So and with regard to the carpet, we're absolutely going to carpet everything that needs carpeted, so everywhere there's carpet, that's the plan is that we're carpeting throughout the courthouse, so those rooms would be included and we'll certainly consult you on the, the colors and things that you want to pick through your courtroom.
Correct. All right, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for everyone here for indulging me.
Thank you, Judge, good to see you.
Thank you.
And for you attorneys, you see how quick Judge went through his stuff, that's what he had liked for you to do too. All right. Eddie?
Exonerations. Refunds that are generated by those exoneration.
Eddie, ready on the refund for?
Okay, well, there's one in there for, for this, not here, that's all I could start here, so.
Okay, well, I move that we approve the exoneration.
Second, here we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor? I'll make a motion that we approve the refunds.
Second.
Okay, a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
And then there was another one, Eddie, that you had in our packet.
Kristen Smith. We had she had, you know, we walked and she moved guys picked it up. New year on.
Talking about a hundred ninety-seven fifty.
Thought it was higher than.
That's no, the total is five, that's one year.
One year?
Yes, three years, I think.
And I move that we approve her refund in whatever way, whether she wants the credit or the refund.
So I added all three, all three of those pages up, three years.
Whatever way she wants to get it.
So. I'll second.
Refund or whatever she wants.
Does she want a credit, does she want refund?
She wants a credit or a refund, give her whichever she wants, that's my motion.
Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have any divide or?
That's a lot.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We have vouchers and invoices, Gia.
We need them.
Well, if we had any question.
Okay, yeah, she's all. Well, the only questions I had, people in the room can answer probably, Chief Vernon, you had submitted for training for Josh and I know he just went through an academy, what was the nature of that training?
That was probably when he went to the state, some of the state trains, like there.
Okay. And then the other concern was, I saw that I think it was All-American has been invoicing the Fayette County Commission at a post office box that doesn't belong to the Fayette County Commission, so I just wanted whoever is working with them to correct that and invoice whoever's placing the order. Because post office box sixty is, does not belong to us. At least to my knowledge, so that was just, that was the only other thing, plus we had not, we were supposed to approve last meeting, paying Josh Davis's invoices and we failed to do that, so I want to when I make my motion, I want to add those to it. Amy, do you have our minutes handy? Or Ruth, do you, because we're going to sign them.
The ones that you're.
Because there was another thing that we had put on for last meeting too, that we didn't approve right away and that we should have approved last week. What was it? Do you remember what it was? Meeting before last that we were supposed to approve last meeting and I don't think we did, because when I was reading the minutes, I would have looked through to see what it was. Give me one second please. I will see here. All the shirts and embroidery, so those would not be qualified for reimbursement under the policy we adopted, so that was it, so it was oh, yeah, so I move that we approve vouchers and invoices and in addition, approve Josh Davis's payments submitted.
I'll second.
On April second.
Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Payroll, five-two.
I move that we approve payroll for five-two.
Second. Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we approve the minutes for April second. I move that we approve the minutes for April second, April third, and April fifteenth.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. I don't see any estate settlements, did we have one? Oh, wait, wait a minute.
Yeah, there's.
Wait, yeah, there was, there was, never mind, I did see them, I recognized some names. Okay. Um, I move that, but, oh, John's already signed it.
John's, this is, that is, sure.
It wasn't supposed to be in the packet. Oh, she didn't, that's from a previous meeting.
Oh, so we don't have any then.
Yeah, it looked previous to me.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me, yes, from the second, that's from based on the so let's just get by that.
Right, Ruth? Oh, actually, no, we need to get the Cannleton Hollow.
Joey, give you the, there you go, they have some shirts.
Okay, Terry. Since you're quick.
We have eight tax tickets for real estate, the first one twenty-three at the auditor's office, and this is in October, and we are able to un-submit those, and we need to do that so we're able to post them. So we're just gonna do that.
Okay, I move that we approve the publication.
Second.
Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye. Thank you, you.
While we're looking at the exhibit, New Haven PSD, and Knoll Falls PSD.
I'm going to move that we postpone those and item number four about June nineteenth and twentieth to the next meeting, we forgot to ask Judge Pass that question, I'll have to text him.
I'll second. Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Cannleton Hollow temporary sewage fix.
Is Joey here? Good night.
I don't see Joey here.
He might be on Zoom.
Me, Joseph, good night.
Yep, there he is. Joey, can you unmute yourself? Okay.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. I'll I'll start, and then I'll let you jump on, so we've been exploring some temporary measures that we could take up Cannleton Hollow to help with the sewage smell up there that was a result of the floods of twenty-twenty-two, the latest we have is Mr. Goodnight from Knoll Falls PSD has researched coming up with treating the, some more chemicals to treat the waste that's coming from the prison, that he thinks is going to mitigate the problem. And so today's agenda item is so he can explain to my colleagues what that plan is. We've already been offered some funding from the NRG RDA toward this this issue, and we have some funding of our own, so I'm hoping we can vote on something today that will will help as the summer gets hot, those folks have some relief. Go ahead, Joey.
Yeah, um, as far as, uh, you know, we we can't stop everything from coming down the hall or so. Uh, our best option is to kill all bacteria that is going into the stream above the Union Hall coming out of the prison, so we can do that one of two ways with hypo, uh, which is a bleach solution, uh, that is then, that kills all bacteria and is removed by a sulfur solution, and that runs together, uh, just about eight dollars a gallon, okay? That's the combined prices of both, the the hypo and the, so and the amount that we're going to need is roughly about uh, I think we figured about a gallon a day to do that, you're looking at about nineteen hundred and thirty-four dollars a piece for pumps, so you'd have to have two pumps, and one for each one, to pump that in there. And you would have to have a building to keep those in, which you're looking at another five thousand, but I am pretty sure that, you know, within about thirty thousand dollars, that we'll be able to keep all of that out of the stream and be able to knock this, take the smell away until, and take the smell away plus uh, take away the fact that anything coming from the prison is going to affect the people down there. You know, you're looking at eleven hundred people sitting on top of that mountain, uh, that's sending, you know, some pretty, pretty stuff, pretty nasty stuff down there. So I I think this is the best solution to get on the board that we could do within, you know, the next week, two weeks tops.
How long, how long will that last us? For thirty thousand?
Well, if you go with the fifty-five gallon drum, you're looking at a gallon a day, you're looking at a little bit more on the sulfur to take it out, because it takes more to remove the bleach, uh, but I would say, uh, twenty-five thousand should get us, you know, at least I'd say forty-five days.
How much do we need to do it for a year? I mean, we need to do something until the situation's addressed, so we're gonna probably want to do it in one-year increments.
Right, but I'm just talking about the initial setup of putting that building in there, getting electric plum to it up there at the building, that that's what the initial cost is going to be, and then after that, it's just going to be maintenance on the pump, and then you're just going to have to have a cost for your chemicals, which, like I said, it's going to cost you about eight dollars a gallon, eight eight dollars a gallon to treat that. So if you're looking at fifty-five days, that math works out, sorry. You're looking at what? Four hundred and forty dollars a month? Is what you you're looking at treating that?
Well, I'm kind of looking for is bottom line. Like, how much upfront, and then how much to keep it going for one year?
Uh, like I said, the initial setup, like I said, is going to be around twenty-five thousand. And then after that, I'm looking at, you know, four to five hundred dollars a month, just in chemicals to keep it up.
What you're saying, the thirty thousand dollars would cover fifty-five gallons, because you're touching including a fifty-five gallon drum, so you would take fifty-five off of three hundred and sixty-five days a year, because you're going to treat it daily, and then you would have your total cost, thirty thousand plus.
Right. We, yeah, we had a fire, a fire hydrant problem the other day, and I wasn't able to get to what I needed to get to to finish up.
Okay, well.
You're probably talking thirty, less than forty. Well, you're talking thirty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, and that would be your year. But that's what your setup number.
I'd like to move that we allocate not to exceed forty thousand dollars for at least initial investment in this, and we can use the NRG RDA's generous offer of money for that, and we can revisit this, Joey, come to us in advance as we, you know, go along, if you need more funding for this, don't run out.
Okay, yeah, well, like I say, you know, if it doesn't take that much, we can always put, you know, the twenty-five or forty towards the chemicals, and like I say, I really think that that in the long run, that this is going to be the best solution for everybody involved.
Okay, well, another thing too is if, you know, thirty days from now, or it starts to get hot, and it's not really working, I need you to come back to us.
Oh, no, it it will work, it's a guarantee. You can.
Joey, I've got a, I've got a question.
Yep.
We're we're going to introduce a chemical into the environment, correct?
Yep.
Is the DNR DP, everybody aware of it?
Uh, these chemicals are introduced into every wastewater facility in the state of West Virginia.
So you're saying it's okay?
Yes, sir, one hundred percent. This is what all treatments done with, uh, you know, throughout the United States.
And how how are you going to introduce this chemical, and where?
It'll be pumped into, it'll be pumped into their lines, it will not be pumped into the creek. What's coming out of the prison will be treated, so that what is affecting the creek is going to be one hundred percent, just going to be just like water coming out of the prison. We are going to have some solids, but those solids will not have any bacteria, viruses, anything, and then they will all be uh, void of any of that. All hepatitis, you know, all that good stuff, it rolls out of there.
How's the uh, the funding going to be released? Are we going to?
I'll reach out to Jenna and ask her to transfer the forty to us, and then if we don't go through it, we can send it back.
Yeah, I don't want to uh, to release that funds to the PSD, I want us to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I could get you guys the quotes and the bills, and I'll bring them to you as we move forward.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just pay him, we'll pay him directly, just give him to us.
Yeah, I'll just present, uh, would that be in a meeting, or just send them to the, you guys there at the office?
Send him to the county administrator.
Okay, all right, I can do that.
All right, um, so my motion's on the table.
Okay, have a motion.
I second.
Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye, thank you, Joey, very much.
You're welcome.
And if you've ever ridden through Cannleton Hollow during the summertime right now, it's a interesting odor.
Yeah, spread the word, Mayor, hopefully it'll, they'll get some relief, I'd like to know if we don't, they don't.
Okay, Ruth, we got a little bit of time, we can go through yours.
Is Dan, is Dan here?
No.
Is Dan planning to be here? Okay, all right, I move we approve the floodplain insurance agreement.
Second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you have support letters from the
So we had a lot of last-minute, and it happens every time they do congressionally-directed spending, that we get requests for support letters, because there's a short deadline, so we have a number that we are approving, that we had actually, most of them, that we approved last year, that we're approving Nut Protonk for this year, which means in retrospect, so. And those are a number of letters for the city of Oak Hill for different projects. Um, a letter for a golly bridge business, right?
We haven't printed that one, but I would, yeah.
Yeah, we want to include that. A couple from the Fayette County Commission. Let's see. County Fayetteville. County Vanstead. New Haven, a couple from two, New Haven PSD projects, they're all projects, again, that we had approved last year, but want to push forward again this year, so I move that we approve those letters. Nut Protonk.
I'll second.
Got a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're already shown.
Hazard mitigation ways. So we have another hazard mitigation ways, and this one ends with, this PAXI Wills. So I'm going to move that we approve the lease.
I'll second. Have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, we're going to take a five, ten-minute break, and then we'll be back, give me time to get these things up. Thank you. Okay. We're going, we did have some estate settlements that we have to take care of, um, so.
So I'm just going to be approve the estate settlements that.
But I, I have to recuse my ex-mother-in-law. Okay.
Okay, so recuse yourself from the whole.
That's, yes, that's why I wanted to look at it. Okay, um, I'll second. We have motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So Commissioner Fornetta is abstaining, please.
Yeah. Uh, okay, put these here. All right. The fire budgets will be presented now. I'm going to go down each line, line for line, for each department. Um, starting with Anstead, and this is in no particular, or maybe it's an alphabetical order, um, Anstead. The twenty-four, twenty-five budget allotted to Anstead was sixty-eight thousand and ninety-nine dollars. The twenty-five, twenty-six budget, which is coming up, is eighty thousand with your truck being paid off at two hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents, plus, uh, your roof being a priority. Armstrong.
John, just a, and we realize that these truck payoffs amounts, amounts might be slightly different, so, you know, we realize that interest has accrued since the last time we got the number, so we intend to pay off the trucks that he's reading, whatever the, whatever the payoff amount is.
Thought I saw Tracy Gray, or is Mike here?
Tracy earlier.
Mike, did you hear, did you hear the, did you hear, go ahead, you want to repeat it again from Mr. for chief? Okay. Last year, or fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, the budget was sixty-eight thousand and ninety-nine dollars. For twenty-five, twenty-six, it will be eighty thousand dollars, plus we're paying off your truck, and we have your roof as a priority.
Do you want to make a motion for each fire department, or how do you want?
We'll do it, we'll do it as a group.
So this is, so this is just one big motion.
Yeah, yes, one big motion, but we want, we want you to understand fully what what is in the budget, so you, you have.
No, no, the roof is separate.
Yeah, the roof will be separate for that. I think we have like a hundred and fifty or something like that.
No, he has sixty-five for the roof, what he set aside, and then um, it's eighty thousand dollar budget, plus your truck payoff in full.
Yeah, and your fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars for your truck payoff, which could be a little different because of time, uh, uh, moved on. Okay, uh, Armstrong, twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, I saw Shannon somewhere.
Shannon, we're here.
Okay, sorry, I thought, I was looking back at your normal spot. Your budget was fifty-six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. For twenty-five, twenty-six, your budget is fifty-nine thousand.
And I see no special request or truck payoff or anything for you?
For Boomer. Boomer, twenty-four, twenty-five, your budget was fifty-six thousand, one ninety-eight. Um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, your budget is fifty-nine thousand.
Boomer?
Danese.
And then don't they have a truck payoff, John?
No.
I don't see the truck.
Note on here.
I don't see a front payment on, do you, what is your?
It's fifty-five thousand cheaper and right around, plus the twenty thousand for next year, we need a last payment.
Okay, well, I think what we're trying to do is pay off all those trucks.
Yeah, so you're looking at about seventy thousand.
Sure, right?
Yeah, because she has seventy-five thousand truck pay right here, it's on my, it's on a note Ruth made on her.
Yeah, okay, all right, I covered that up, so I could read these lines, because I got that big one.
Right.
So that truck payment is.
Okay, so truck payment will be included, I mean, not included in your budget, but taken care of.
Be paid off.
Danese. Um, twenty-four, twenty-five, Danny, anybody here from Danese? Okay, twenty-four, twenty-five, your budget was fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seven dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-six, your budget is sixty-one thousand. Um, Fayetteville, John, I know you're here, okay, uh, budget was twenty-four, twenty-five, seventy-two thousand, six forty, excuse me, seventy-two thousand, four sixty-four. Your budget for twenty-five, twenty-six will be eighty-three thousand. I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
He asked about if it includes, um, the increase to upgrade the alarm system, I didn't see that anywhere, what was the amount that you requested for it?
Twenty-two, twenty-one thousand dollars, cents on it.
I'd like to include that for Chief Vernon's budget.
I'll second it. Well, well, we're not, we're not. Well, well, we don't, we're not, it's not a motion.
Yeah, we could just make that, so we can take care of this when we get.
We, we made notes.
I just, we just didn't see it, Chief, that's all.
Yeah. Um, Golly Bridge. Golly Bridge here?
Yeah.
Okay, um, your twenty-four, twenty-five budget was fifty-eight thousand and fourteen dollars. Your twenty-five, twenty-six is sixty-one thousand, plus we're paying, um. Two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars for your truck payment or whatever it's going to be to get that, they take care of. Um, Dolly River.
Thank you, sir.
Golly River. Okay, um, your twenty-four, twenty-five budget was fifty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Your budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is fifty-seven thousand.
And I see no other payoff in that. Is there anything else?
Not that I would, sir.
Just bring it to us if it comes up, please.
Luke Creek, anybody here from Luke Creek? Okay, well, Luke Creek's was fifty-five thousand, three forty-four for twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-five, twenty-six is fifty-six thousand. Meadow Bridge. Okay. Alright, um, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget was fifty-five, five eighty-seven. The twenty-five, twenty-six is fifty-eight thousand, plus we're working on, uh, your floor as another priority. Getting it taken care of.
That will be funded, is what he means.
Montgomery, yeah, I see you. Um, your budget for twenty-four, twenty-five was sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Your budget for twenty-five, twenty-six is eighty-five thousand.
And Chief, if that radio grant's not awarded, come back to us for it, okay? Um, and also when you get your, um, numbers together for that building so we can start budgeting, okay?
Mount Hope. Um, twenty-four, twenty-five was fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and six dollars. The twenty-five, twenty-six is sixty-five thousand. Not all, yep, see it back here.
You know, John, I'm sorry, but did you want to cover those new trucks or is that going to be in a separate?
I'll tell.
Okay.
Um, not all. It, or twenty-four, twenty-five was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Twenty-five, twenty-six is sixty thousand, plus you have a truck payoff of what we have is a hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Rick, do y'all have a truck payoff?
Yes.
Yeah. And then we'll, we'll, uh, we can get the exact numbers like we're doing on all the trucks. Um, Oak Hill, twenty-four, twenty-five, it was one seventy-four, eight sixty-two. Uh, for twenty-five, twenty-six, it's one ninety-one. Not a dollar ninety-one, but a hundred ninety-one thousand, one hundred and. Uh, tax. Twenty-four, twenty-five was fifty-seven thousand, three hundred. Twenty-five, twenty-six is sixty thousand, plus a truck payoff of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. Smithers, anybody here for Smithers? Yeah, okay. Um, Smithers, twenty-four, twenty-five was fifty-six thousand, seven sixty-seven. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six is fifty-seven thousand, plus a truck payoff of forty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Um, and Ray Now. Um, which is in Greenbrier County, but they help out on that side of the county. Um, theirs was fifteen thousand, seven fifty, and it will stay at fifteen thousand, seven fifty. With all that said, the total budget for twenty-four, twenty-five was a million, twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. For twenty-five, twenty-six, it's a million, one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Which is an increase of eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, plus. Six hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty-six cents in truck payoffs. And I'm sort of glad we don't have any more fire departments because I'm losing my voice.
Well, and in addition, those, those two major projects for Anstead and Meadow Bridge. And the radio memory if it needs it. And the twenty-two K for Fayetteville, so. So is that, can we include the twenty-two K in your motion and?
Yes.
Get that through. Okay, so I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now.
That, that was, now that was for the twenty-two thousand for Fayetteville, John. Vernon?
Yes, for Chief Vernon, whatever it costs Chief Vernon, you know, when you get it for his alarms.
For your alarm system, twenty-two thousand for your alarm system. Alright, good deal. Mr. Coleman, do you have a question?
What about the compressor I had in my?
Yeah, that's what I was just looking for.
I don't, how much was that?
It's going to be in the twenty-two dollar range.
Okay. I didn't see that either, but I'll move that we approve that, that purchase along with this.
Okay.
I second the motion.
Okay, got a motion second for all those in favor?
Aye, thank you for bringing that to our kitchen because we have a pile of.
Yes, sir.
Was there anything allocated for a special operations unit?
Um, I haven't got to that part yet. That was just the budget part.
That was just, that's just your budgets that you guys know that you, what you have now. You know what you got. And anyone here that has gotten their budget, you realize you're going to take truck payments out of that because you will know, who know truck payments except for the three departments maybe that we're talking. That will receive different new trucks.
Alright. The special operations, which is, help me with this, guys. Hazmat, ha, angle and Swiftwater.
High angle, yes.
What is that number based on? Because it, round numbers always make me wonder, like what, what do those teams need this, this year?
We, we road say each year, one, one year we'll get Swiftwater gear, next year we'll get rope gear, make sure we're going to have to make gear. And we've always used that. Fall part figure there and make that work.
What's on, on tap for this year? Because I know we, we've got some Swiftwater gear pretty recently.
Uh, a lot of one will be rope rescue stuff this year and next year will be out of land and we'll be back to Swiftwater. Uh, Mike, Mike, to get you a list next meeting, what all we need for the county as far as growth.
Do, do you guys have any extra cost now that that Hawksnest tram is going in there and you're going to have to have, be proactive instead of reactive in case that thing goes down and we have people trapped on it?
Well, we've always covered that train.
Is it going to give you any other additional cost that may occur to this thirty-five thousand? That's quite impressive, by the way. If anyone hasn't gone down to Hawksnest, go down to Hawksnest and look at that train. It's quite impressive.
Mike, can you get us a, a list and the numbers together for our next meeting? Or?
For the special teams.
Your special team, what you think you're going to need for your special teams this year. Get us a number. Can you do that?
Yeah. Okay, if you can do that for our next meeting, we'll have that on the, on our agenda. Thank you. Okay, trucks. Somebody want to talk about trucks, please?
You want me to do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
Or Greg, do you want to do it?
I don't think it fits. Alright, um. Our trucks are planned, we had a truck committee get, uh, together and they, they had a, a policy where they are a, a format where they rated the trucks with mileage, age, um. Use, availability and all that with the trucks and they kind of rated them on a scale of one to six. They took the, 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 the highest numbers. That it came from and they were, they narrowed it down to three trucks. And the way we looked at it, a truck will cost a base truck, uh, uh, that we're looking at to buy is eight hundred thousand dollars a piece. So we looked at three, uh, stations to receive three, sort of a truck apiece, which would total three trucks at eight hundred thousand dollars a piece. At the end of the four-year levy cycle, it would be two point four million dollars paid for. Now. The thing with the truck is, we are, the, we have proposed the, um, that we supply each. Entity, each municipal fire department that had been chosen by the firefighters association, two hundred thousand dollars a year for four years, which would total eight hundred thousand dollars. Times four would be two point four million dollars to get the base model truck. If the department wishes to get a truck that costs more than eight hundred thousand dollars, that would be a cost incurred upon that. The commission will not pay it out of the levy or general funding. It is something that if you want to, we'll knock your truck, we're not going to stop you. But you have to fund that in your way you wish to fund it. So the three that were selected were Oak Hill, Fayetteville and Mount Hope, Tyrone, I'm sorry.
Can I ask if any of the other fire stations have an objection to that? Because I know that, you know, you all belong to the fire association, but I, I realize that some. Apartments are more active in that association than others. And I just want to make sure that that's a fair representation of, of how. Uh, you want things to go because I know none of these got fire engines last time. I know that much. But I don't know if there are other needs out there that I'm not aware of.
Oh, that's like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and I, I know the committee was meticulous. I mean, I saw the numbers that you guys put together and that, and I thought it was very reasoned. Um, I just wanted to ask while there are so many people here, if there was anybody who had concerns about that because, you know. The only people we hear from are the same people all the time and this is the biggest crowd we've had in this room. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure everybody was. On board. And I don't see anybody objecting, so it's not, seems so.
Well, then moving on with the, there is another thing we, we spoke of, that there would be an MOU involved that the commission would, would, would. Submit to the municipalities. If you have a municipality tied to your fire department that contributes to your fire department. As I understand it, once the truck is bought, it becomes a big property of the municipality. So if the truck is sold, then the commission or the levy has no. Legal claim to the money that was sold because the municipality has that claim and there's nothing the commission can do about that. However. Commission feels that if you are not tied to a municipality, in other words, another municipality is not providing any other assistance to you financially. If the truck is sold. The truck, if a truck that we replaced, we have the, the, the money was, the truck was bought with levy money. It is now going to be sold because it is no longer of use because we are replacing it, then the money would be returned to the levy. Not to the commission, but to the levy. And the, and, and an MOU would be drawn up between the municipalities and everyone involved. That we all plan that during this levy cycle, that two hundred thousand dollars a year will be submitted to three apartments. Per year for a total of eight hundred thousand dollars.
I think, isn't there state code about anything purchased by the levy? Or departments that aren't in municipality that still belongs to the county? I thought I read something like that.
That we traditionally in the past have taken that decision that, uh, levy funds that go to contribute to, uh. Purchase of equipment, things of that, the county levy fund should be reimbursed if that equipment is sold, uh, including trucks.
Well, I mean, we don't want your trucks. I mean, this is more of a, also with the. Stations that aren't in municipalities, if you do need additional bells and whistles for your engines, just project it on your budgets and let us know what you need. Um, you know, and I, I can't say that we'll all agree that, you know, to approve it, but you certainly should let us know. Because you don't have an outside source of funding other than that little bit you get from the state, um, to be able to help pay for it. So. Do let us know, please.
And to clarify my statement, I did make this statement, the money, if it is sold, if it is sold, it does not come back to the county commission. It comes back to the fire levy, which is yours anyway. And it was voted for you bodily.
Okay, so. Um, everybody's, all the fire department's budgets went up. Nobody went backwards. Um, there's going to be trucks paid off, five of them. Plus, you're going to be getting three new trucks. And, uh. It was a positive move.
There, there's only one other thing we haven't addressed and that's PMs. Um. And, and how do we plan, what do we propose to plan to pay for the PM, which we are currently doing? We're going through a preventive maintenance now.
We talked about that a little bit. I mean, I kind of would like to see kind of a wag at the, like the percentage because where we're doing them in bulk, we talked about that at another meeting. Um, but I would kind of like to see. A number of percentage attributed to, to each department, just so we can see what that department needs to function, you know, because the PMs is part of the functionality, even. Some of these services that we're getting. So I guess Josh, whoever's doing the fire coordinator, if you could just kind of give us a wag, like, you know. How much you would attribute to each, each department for the things that you're coordinating at a higher level. That would help us just with budgeting as we're looking at, you know, who's getting what each year. And so I'm, however we do that, I mean.
And, and promise to get the invoices into our web or our site or that, that Ruth checks daily. That would be helpful in getting our people paid that are doing their PMs.
And send it to the correct site.
Or send it to the correct site.
Right, these truck payments will go directly to the.
Yeah, and the truck payments will go directly to the, will be a direct.
We'll pay them off.
Are we going to pay them off right away? I mean, we, we could probably.
Yeah, I think the sooner we do it, we save interest.
Yeah, we'll save the interest.
I think we just need to take a look at it and.
Yes.
Once we, once we make the purchases, if you guys can turn in that information to us. If we have something we're able to pay off, we can or pay them down to lower the interest.
Okay, that, uh. That has everything on our meeting.
Okay, so I move that we approve the truck.
Hang on, hang on. Doc, do you have, Mr. McGinnis, do you have something to say?
Yeah, what about the new fire station down at the training center?
We're still waiting on paperwork on all that. As soon as you guys can get that information that we, uh, have requested that we're able to fund you, we will pick that up at the next available meeting as soon as you guys can get it to us.
What paperwork?
It's.
We're getting off track.
Yeah.
It's part of the budget, so I'm asking.
It's, it's the agreement that a group came up with that met with Michael and.
That you were a part of.
Yeah.
Um, so we're still waiting on all of that paperwork that we already discussed at a few meetings.
The last discussion that was. We had all the paperwork and it could be paid at this time, but we cannot get anything from the fire mission until there are fees of billing for a fire department and, but we needed to do that. Before we could get the rest of the paperwork.
I think.
Even your attorney.
Do you have the five oh one C three paperwork done?
Yes.
I think we.
And you received it back?
I told you how much it would cost. It was six hundred dollars application fees and then the type of the supplies.
Okay, so you haven't gotten that information yet?
Right, and none of it's been turned in to us yet, Chief, and that's, that's kind of part of it. You know, I'd like to see what you got. Okay, well, it's not up here, but so, um, we're gonna, we're gonna have to make that decision on another day after we review what you've gotten finished.
Um, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of that at another meeting.
Okay.
Hold on, we've got a question.
Sorry, this backtracks a little bit. We just had a curiosity. So we, and I may have missed it. You mentioned the three trucks. For this levy cycle, which I understood. So does that mean the next levy cycle, would that be? The intention or the hope that we could just do the three trucks every?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we would hope to.
Yeah, and, and maybe if we needed more, maybe another. I mean, it's going to depend on what the levy brings in, but it's been bringing in good money. So it's just going to depend on a need. I mean, if, 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 you know, if we're doing what we do where we're trying to prevent things from breaking down, it's probably going to be the lower number, but if we have one that we know is about to break down, we might have to look at it a little differently.
I mean, I can speak on behalf of Danny's department from what, what we know, we, our newest truck. Was roughly two thousand sixteen, but our oldest truck is in the nineties and we can't get parts for it anymore. So I know that, I mean, we're knocking the door, they're going to have to do something, make a plan for that something.
Just keep us.
Fully support the, the county association there decision though. So, um, I understand that everybody has needs and all this and we're together to get those things here.
But we would like to know what those needs are from you all directly as well. So, I mean, because if there is some flexibility, we're the ones who will know it. So, you know, we can always keep that in the back of our minds, okay?
The money for the trucks, new trucks, is it coming from carrier to the money or money that's in the levies now or is that projected for, to be paid for by how they?
Paid for by how they, all the levy fund probably ends up in.
Ruth, where was that, the eight hundred coming from? Was it the carrier, or was it from?
I mean, there's.
I mean, the two point four. Probably the carryover. And we're projected, our low projection is bring in another one point four, you said, this year?
Yeah, that's what you budget for.
That came up in the discussion, Senator Hill, I have, like, uh, said all of them differently. And I know that you're all inside not to carry everybody, but they ended, there was a way, very money over that it would require a governmental agreement between the commission and, say, an individual fire department. Yeah, you're, you're, somebody's trying to say about like, government to build a fire department. There was a way very much, that it was not against the law. And there was no maximum amount or time period about.
Yeah, I think the press got it slightly wrong, I mean, when the press was saying that we, we made decisions, we made based on the auditor's advice. It was more that they, the auditor just said, look, you know, the fire levy isn't meant to be a savings account, or levy. It's not just fire levy, our fire levy just happened to have a healthy amount of money in it, so it, it drew the comment. But they didn't by any means tell us what else to do about that or anything else, and, and I.
Pretty nice that said that, uh, but they did say that if you are saving for large perks, like, for payments.
You're right, and we know that because, because um, our county administrator had said, some of this balance is because we have these major purchases that we have put money aside to be able to purchase and lump sum rather than loans and that sort of things.
It's important that citizens, but the county understands that it's, fire departments have been brutal. Uh, they could save people, you have to prove, pour them around the money, they buy it, the department, the other money. So that they could save up this money for your purchases, which, like, say, we do the fall, to save the, uh, save people money by buying things.
And now that budgeting is just going to be done by the commission, and, and, you know, as long as you guys are telling us what your needs are, we're gonna be budgeting.
But we need, you know, we need to write it down, because like the alarm system, I brought that up, and it's in my budget, and I brought it up, we discussed it. I didn't exactly write it down on the budget document.
You know, and some things just. I, I think it helps, but also, you know, some things just slip through the cracks, like, they'll, they'll make us spreadsheets, like, this is probably the fourth or fifth iteration that I've had of a spreadsheet, the best one, but, but, and, and sometimes all the information doesn't make it. So it's good that you're here, but because you were able to bring it up, and we were able to cover it.
And I can bring us up here, but, uh, when are we gonna get a copy of the purchasing policy that?
Did it not, has it not gone out yet?
You so much want to update that table.
So the problem was, we're trying to put that table from the state policy in it, and the thing, we couldn't copy and paste a dag on thing, so we're gonna have to recreate it. But we'll get it out, I will get it out in the next week or so. I'll retype the thing if I have to, get it out. Okay. All right, so we need to make a motion with regard to these trucks.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the uh, eight hundred per year for three trucks. Um, and that's gonna also, you know, be linked to the MOU that we execute.
It's two hundred.
What did I say?
Eight hundred.
Yeah, we don't, eight hundred years. We said eight hundred a year, and they, these guys picked up and said, we've got some nice trucks.
Eight hundred year total for the three trucks.
No, it's six hundred, six hundred a year.
Somebody else make a motion.
I, I moved that we uh, provide six hundred thousand dollars a year for a period of four years to do three departments.
Very good, and that's gonna be, we're gonna get the MOU in place before we start making payments. MOUs are just gonna basically reflect what happens to trucks that are sold. And, and if you use state funds toward a truck or something, you just have to, you know, do the percentage, how much did the levy pay versus how much did your own funding pay?
Are we not gonna go with those any of the trucks to the grain?
Well, we, we may.
Time out, there's a motion on the floor.
Yes, yes, that's good.
And, and we need to.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, okay, now we can discuss.
Yes, chief, that's an option too.
Yeah.
And we're talking about the ones that are sold.
You guys are good control what you do with your, your trucks and everything, but when, if you decide that I'm, we're gonna sell it, then we have to go through the process of where does the money go once the truck is sold. If you'd want to donate it, then there is no money to disperse, so. If you would donate it to municipality, it would be given to the municipality, yes.
Okay.
Back to you saying the rollover money is going to be a truck thing, does that mean we're all for all over money?
I don't know. We, we aren't, you, are you talking about where everybody's kind of banking their little bit, that, that habit you, yes. Yes, but that doesn't mean that you lose the ability to purchase whatever you were saving for with that money. I mean, that, that money's in the general levy fund.
I mean, do I need a written agreement from y'all saying I can use that money for a fire department? I can't plan to build a fire department without number of money.
Well, what we need to know is how much you need first, and then we need to go from there to allow us to help budget for that. And help you get it funded, I mean, we're, we're looking at, we've already advertised, but we're hiring a grant writer to help us get funding for all for kind of our priority projects, and, and fire-related things are among them, also the shooting range and some other things, so. You know, that's something that we, you know, I know that you're still trying to figure out with the building and everything, but, but we need some numbers from you in order to be able to budget for it.
So we, I spoke last meeting about my truck garage, as well as some money going towards our down payment for the truck, if we were allowed the eight hundred thousand. How do I know how much we can spend above that if that money's gone?
Did you, I didn't see in your, your budget for that. Did he have that in his budget? Well, let, let's get it bid out and then see what, you know, what, to go from there, and if it can afford. I mean, we, there's a lot of money in the account right now, so, so if we can get some bids, you know, once you get your numbers together ready, we can look into that.
Yeah, well, I would say.
And I, I understand that, and we'll take that into consideration.
You had no truck pay, payoff though, did you? You have no truck.
How much did you have, how many did you, did you, did you save?
The last running total I had that in that, take you in a second. Uh, the last total I had, and I, I don't know how least this is, was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. Yes, for this year. I, that's, I mean, I don't know what you spent out of that, or what you used for that, that was the last update I had.
You have first, but trucks aren't the main characters, those trucks are a year, year, a few years to be. But you're gonna have to hold that money in the account for a few years.
Yes. Which is one of the allowable things to, to do. Set it aside for that, we don't need it.
And from what I understand, if you do not order those trucks before July first, what is the increase in trucks that you guys learned? How much? But once you made the purchase, the order, then, then that will lock the price, and then we can, we can do the payments from there. As long as you have the order in, know what you want. I understand your plight, your plight is, do I have any money left over that I can spend in addition to the eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, I want to take a look at your, I want to take a look at your situation, can you just get us an estimate?
Yeah.
Please.
Get us an estimate of what you want to order.
Because some of these other projects did get included and, and his written, so I, I do wanna, I do want to see your estimate.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, Commissioner Taylor.
There is, go ahead, chief, go ahead.
Question regarding the engine purchases, uh, can a municipality or a department sign a municipality use Sourcewell as a resource to make that purchase? Are y'all aware, aware of Sourcewell?
I'm not, no.
I'm not familiar with it.
Nationally, that's where you don't actually have to advertise or bid, at all, it's company or party, that organization.
Mr. Silberberg, are you familiar with that? You, are you familiar, Mr. Taylor?
I'm not, Sourcewell, we'll look into it.
Can you send us information on it, send it to Ruth?
I'm for it if I don't have a, you know, if I don't find anything, any reason not to, I mean, anything that makes it easier for better. Which chief are you selling? Like behind Freddie. Golly River, okay.
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Okay, so that wraps up our meeting, um, thank you all for coming out.
That's your job.
Second.